We appreciate you making time to come back to us again. Y'all made extra time for us earlier and we are picking up that conversation where we left off. So, thank y'all for coming to us earlier to explain how this budget has been affected to some degree by late arriving information from the state. We are committed to working with y'all on filling a $22.6 million gap that we didn't know we were going to have. And so, you know, we had asked yesterday just to give y'all a timeline to hopefully have some information we can use with regard to what possibilities are on your end to fill in that gap. And then with that information, then we can work on what the possibilities are on our end to fill in that gap. But we are committed to providing our students and teachers with the resources that they need to fully fund your budget. And I am hopeful and optimistic we can get there. And we appreciate y'all working on our timeline with the school board to be here today. And hopefully, we'll take your information and get back to you in time to work with your timeline because you've got to have a budget by the end of the month as well. So with that, I will turn this over to you, Dr. Battle, to introduce your team. Tell us about your budget and let's figure out how to do a great job here.
Yes, and thank you so much for the invitation to be here. Council members, Council member Allen, Council member Lee, thank you so much for your collaboration and your work with us. I will introduce myself first. Adrian Battle, Director of Schools, and I'll allow the team to introduce themselves.
Thank you. I'm Emily Masters and I'm the District 3 Representative for the School Board and I'm also the Advocacy Chair. So, I am the one that sometimes calls you, texts you, emails you.
Good afternoon. I'm Chris Henson. I'm Chief Financial Officer for the School District.
All right, and Board Member Masters is going to kick us off.
First, I'm going to begin with an apology because if I run out the side door, it's because I have a graduation at Lipscomb for Stratford High School. And we have to get those babies graduated. So, just want to... And I know Dr. Battle has a graduation tonight as well. It's a very exciting time of year. I also wanted to begin by saying, first of all, we are so grateful for the mayor's investment last year and the promised investment again this year for schools. And the responsiveness of council members when we reach out, just in general when we reach out, but then on top of that, when we have a sort of emergency situation like $22.6 million that we need to come up with, just the way that you have listened and responded has been very encouraging. I, of course, am on the school board because I believe that educating children is the most important thing that we do as a community. And I see every day Nashville taking more strides in the direction of that being truly a community-wide value. I'm very appreciative of that. I know you have the numbers and the information about the budget in front of you, the fact that we are dealing with this deficit from the state level. And I know we're going to give you a lot more information about that moving forward. But I just want to say again that if you have any lingering questions as we go through this process, please don't hesitate to reach out to any school board member, but certainly to me directly. And you can even get my cell phone number from Brett or from Emily. There's a few of them out there you can get it from, from Sean. So, anyway, I would welcome hearing from any of you and thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Board Member Masters, for all of your work around the budget and for your advocacy. So, I'm going to go ahead and jump into the information we have prepared for our conversation today. So, of course, back on April 27th, the mayor delivered his State of Metro address, which he was able to communicate a historic $91.2 million investment in public education. This historic investment will allow us to do a few things. It will help us address our continuity of operations budget, will help us increase our wages to better retain and attract top employees to serve in MNPS schools, particularly in hard-to-fill or hard-to-staff support positions, and to be able to implement a six-week paid family leave for all employees. So specifically, what does this look like? All employees under this proposal will get at least a 4% cost of living adjustment. All eligible employees will get a step increase to move along the pay scale and see additional increases in their pay. And all employees will be eligible for the paid family leave to take care of newborn children or sick family members without having to exhaust their own leave time that they've accrued. On top of the minimum for all employees, we have targeted investments to further improve pay for some of our hard-to-staff essential support employee roles throughout our district. So, bus drivers, transportation staff, and nutrition services team members, and our paraprofessionals. That's what that targeted investment will address for us in our pay scales. These new pay structures will help us to be as competitive or more competitive than similar positions in the marketplace, which should help us to fill vacancies and improve services for students, as well as take pressure off of our teachers and other support staff who have felt the strain of this nationwide labor shortage. And we've asked all of our employees to take on more to be able to fill the gaps to ensure all of our students have what they need. So with those focused investments and kind of digging into what that $91.2 million investment will provide in continuity of operations, our compensation package, our targeted investments, and paid family leave for everyone, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Henson briefly to walk us through our budget documents.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Hopefully, everyone has a copy of our budget that you can see on the date on the front. The board approved this yesterday, and so it's hot off the press. But I did want to direct your attention to the first page. As you can see at the top, it says Document Number 1. This is intended to serve as a summary of changes from our current year operating budget. And so, I'll just go through these and discuss the different line items and explain what they are. The first is, as Dr. Battle already indicated, our budget includes a 4% cost of living adjustment for both our... all of our certificated employees as well as our support employees. Also included in our budget is a salary step increase for all of those that are eligible for a step increase. We have increases for insurance, both our certificated insurance, which is a self-insured plan through our employee insurance trust, as well as for our support employees through the actions of the Metro Employee Benefit Board. We do have insurance increases. We also have some slight decreases in our pension costs as it relates to the TCRS state plan, as well as the Metro General Government Plan through the Metro Employee Benefit Board. If you look at the last four lines of the Employee Compensation Section, again, as Dr. Battle indicated, we have some targeted investments for pay upgrades for our transportation employees of approximately $4.5 million. Our paraprofessionals, approximately $4.2 million. Our nutrition services staff, pay scale upgrade. This would be a transfer to the Nutrition Services Fund, which is considered a self-supporting enterprise fund of approximately $3.7 million. And then the paid family leave that Dr. Battle mentioned at a cost of $4.7 million. So, if you look at this summary page, you can see that approximately $60 million of the increase is going to employee compensation. If you look at the middle or lower part of the page, there are some charges that we have, several of which come to us from Metro Government. So, we've got some increases in the Metro IT Internal Service Fee, radio transmission, Buildings and Contents Insurance, the Property Tax Refund through the MDHA Transfer, and then just our overall inflationary increases and other required expenditures. As we do every year, we've got an increase in the transfer for our charter schools. This is mainly due to an increase in the per pupil rate as calculated based upon state law, which is total state and local revenue per pupil. And so, we are showing an increase here. We have some of our charter schools that continue to add additional grades. And so, if you look at this top part of the page, you can see that the total operating budget for baseline, as we call it, approximately $1.1 billion, is made up of $60 million in our employee compensation and another $25.7 million of required additions that are other in the middle part of the page. If you look at the bottom part of the page, there was some funding over and above what was required for a continuity of operations budget, as well as for the focused pay upgrades for our transportation, paraprofessional, nutrition services staff. So, what we've done here is the remaining funds after the continuity of operations and the employee compensation has been allocated towards our textbooks as a potential non-recurring expenditure. Textbooks were removed this past year from our operating budget and transferred to our federal ESER funding, which will end at June 30th of 2024. And so, the budget ordinance projection of an additional $91.2 million was based on flat state BEP growth, which is basically what we've been experiencing for the last several years. The new BEP estimates that we received right at the very end of April are lower than the current year BEP funds, as well as the BEP projections that the Tennessee Department of Education provided to us back in March, in late March. Some of you last week saw this presentation, but we'll go through it once more so everybody can see as it relates to us digging into this state BEP funding estimate, a recap of the issues relating to the underfunding and balancing the budget. There are three main factors that we've looked at as it relates to the decrease in our state BEP funding. The first one is that Davidson County continues to have an increased fiscal capacity, which is a calculation from two different entities, which determines a local county's ability to fund education from its own local sources. It's heavily driven by assessed property values and heavily driven by retail sales tax base. And so, we know what's happening with assessed property values in Davidson County, as well as the retail sales tax base. We're attributing approximately $10 million of this reduction due to Davidson County's continued increased fiscal capacity. Another $10 million, we attribute to the increase in state-run school enrollment. We have a number of schools that are within Davidson County but are not a part of Davidson County schools. They're a part of a state-run school district, and the way that the state funds those is that it calculates what their estimated funding would be for those students in those state-run schools, and they take it off the top of our gross BEP funding allocation to determine what we're actually going to receive as a net allocation. And as I mentioned, approximately $10 million of this reduction due to a combination of increased enrollment in state-run schools, as well as a higher per pupil amount. And you can see from the note there where I just explained, the funding comes off the top of our BEP funding. This is the piece of the funding that we really don't have access to or not necessarily transparent to know what this reduction is going to be from year to year. And then the last factor that we have here, it's the end of the Hold Harmless regarding reduced student enrollment. This current fiscal year, the Tennessee Department of Education held all school districts harmless as it relates to enrollment declines due to the pandemic. And so, the State Department of Education used 2019-20 enrollment numbers, as well as the 2019 Fiscal Capacity Index calculation to hold all school districts harmless for this fiscal year. Our enrollment has decreased. You can see our K-12 enrollment decreased by over 3,700 students from fiscal year 1920 to what's projected for fiscal year 2223. A couple of notes there. As part of this whole legislative session, the state did add more funding to the state BEP funding formula for teacher salaries for next year. And then the second note there is that we had the 26th highest percentage enrollment decrease. So, it's not as if we were the top enrollment decrease is on a percentage basis, but we have had some reduction in our K-12 enrollment. Just a point to note out, the BEP funding formula is a K-12 kindergarten through 12th grade funding formula. Pre-K funding is outside of that formula. Just some numbers to share with you from our April estimate that the Tennessee Department of Education sent to us. The overall total state funding that they calculated for Davidson County was just under $296 million. And then they reduced from that gross amount their projection of the funding for the state-run charter schools in the Achievement School District, or run by the State Board of Education or the Public Charter Commission, at approximately $38.3 million to get us to our net number of approximately $257.7 million. You can see below that, the budget ordinance used our current year number at $280.3 million for BEP funding for next year because we had not received any estimate from the Tennessee Department of Education, nor had any other school district received any estimate, that initial estimate from them. You can see the difference there between what's in the budget ordinance and what the April BEP estimate says at $257.7 million. This is our difference of $22.6 million. Just some additional information on the top right. Again, enrollment without pre-K, we're at 78,588 students. Our fiscal capacity is the highest in the state by far at 17.55% of the total state, the total state being 100%. And then our local match at 420.5. Every school district has a local match requirement in the BEP funding formula, and we greatly exceed that local match, and we're very thankful for that support. So, just looking at some information that we received back in March, if you look over in the left column, Fiscal Year 23 BEP Estimate, you can see the state funding is where we want to concentrate our attention. Included in March was $312.1 million. And then you can see over in the Fiscal Year 23 BEP April Estimate, a month later, the state funding decreased to 200 and just over, just under $296 million, a $16.1 million decrease from what they provided in March to what they provided in April. Just some more numbers for you. The Fiscal Year 22 BEP number that they used, again, remembering that they were using the Fiscal Year 1920 number due to the Hold Harmless provision at $82,356, state funding at $308.6 million, the state-run charter schools at $28 million. And then if you go over to the BEP estimate from April, you can see our enrollment decrease. Again, you've seen that number before. Our state funding decrease, and then the amount that is being deducted from our gross BEP funding, that amount increased, which further reduced our net state funding that we will actually receive from the state by approximately $10.3 million. Couple of other slides relating to this. You can see this slide, what has been included in the budget ordinance over time as it relates to state BEP estimates. Fiscal Year 1718 was sort of an anomaly or an outlier as we, up until that point, had been increasing in student enrollment. And so, we had the potential to receive what's called BEP Growth Funding. And then 1819, you can see $285.8 million. And then there's a fairly stable number all the way across, a slight decline going from fiscal year 21 down to fiscal year 23, what's included in the budget ordinance. A few options that we've already discussed with the Budget and Finance Committee, and we've discussed as a school district to address the BEP estimate. The first one would be fund balance. We know that historically, for a number of years, a fund balance has been used as a funding source to proactively address the shortfall difference from the BEP funding. We're estimating, and I know Metro Finance is also estimating, our fund balance to exceed $200 million at the end of this fiscal year. The second option, of course, would, and the reason that, one of the reasons that we're here would be a council budget adjustment. We know now that the budget is in the hands of the Metro Council, and so, obviously, looking to work in partnership to identify a solution to make up the gap. And then thirdly, federal funding and grant offset, remembering that a lot of times, these are also one-time funds. Use federal funding and grant funding to offset at least a portion of that difference in the BEP funding estimate that we've received at the end of April.
All right, thank you, Chris. I'm going to take just a few minutes to walk you through the aspirational budget that was adopted by our Board of Education. The first thing that I want to highlight is our continuity of federally funded initiatives. As you all are aware, we did receive a considerable amount of funding through ESER that will expire the summer of September, excuse me, the summer of 2024, as Chris mentioned. And so, we want to be very strategic and mindful of this being a non-recurring pot of funds that we're strategically trying to address some of our needs in the district. I'm going to take a moment just to highlight a few of the areas that we have invested in leveraging our ESER funds. This is in no way a comprehensive list, but you can see some of the buckets by which we are attempting to accelerate outcomes for our students. And so, we have large investments in the areas of academics, student readiness, our educators, and our foundations. And so, under that, you see specific strategies that we have adopted and aligned to our ESER plan, again, to accelerate student outcomes. I will note that MNPS was named a best-for-all district by the State of Tennessee, recognizing our efforts to allocate over 50% of our ESER funds directly to student learning progress. In fact, we are well over the 50% threshold to be recognized in this way. So, that is something that we are proud of because it is important for us, for these funds, to get as close to our students as possible, meeting their unique needs and personalizing their educational experiences. In addition to that, again, as a part of the aspirational budget approval process, the Board did adopt priorities around our budget. The first one that you've heard some about already is our continuity of the federally funded initiatives. Again, this is a strategic approach to make sure that we can maintain these programs and services that are having a strong return on investment for our students. The first one you see here is around our advocacy centers and coaches. You might recall that you all supported us in this effort and allocated funds for us to expand advocacy centers to all of our elementary schools. We had previously started this work with about 14 prior to that investment, and so we want to make sure that we can maintain that level of service and program for all elementary schools across our district. Our restorative practice assistance is our version of the advocacy centers in our middle schools and our high schools. So, we want to make sure we have that continuity of support for our students to meet both their academic and their SEO needs. You're probably familiar with our Communities Achieves umbrella. This is to expand the Community Achieves work across our district and align our resources for our students and families so there's a seamless transition from tier to tier across the district. And we know that the pandemic has taken a toll on the mental health and well-being of everyone, including the students we serve. And so, we have recommended an investment in mental health counselors to meet the needs of our students. On the right-hand side, you'll see an aspirational budget item around expanding and continuing to implement our Promising Scholars Program. That is our summer program to help again with accelerating the learning outcomes of our students. But what we heard from our students is that it was enriching and fun for them last year as well, and we've got some strong indicators around students who participated in Promising Scholars and their ability to maintain that progress throughout the academic year. You also see investments in social workers across our schools and our commitment to having a nurse in every MNPS school. And the last investment around our aspirational budget is our Metro Schools Reimagined work. This is to implement a systemic infrastructure to support schools and students, promote a college and career culture. These investments include areas of avid work, including our certifications, expanding advanced academic programs across our district and across our clusters, and for our high school Promising Scholars Program as well. So, our current Promising Scholars work addresses students in both K through 12. While the law requires only the elementary and middle school grades, we have expanded it for those summer opportunities to be made available for our high school students as well. All right, in addition to that, for our continuity of federally funded initiatives, of course, we want to continue with our technology integration. Again, a huge thank you to Council for allocating the funds for us to be a one-to-one technology district in MNPS. For years, we dreamed of meeting that need for our students, and we want to continue with our refresh process to make sure those devices are working, that the right services supports, and software is a part of our devices as well. So, you see an investment there. Because we have expanded to a one-to-one district, we want to make sure that we have the appropriate technology device support, increasing that to a student helpline. So, when students are home or when they're in their extended day programs, they have additional support to make sure that their devices are working properly and they have what they need. And for device repairs, because we are talking about putting technology into the hands of our young people, and things happen sometimes. So, we want to make sure that we're ready to meet that need so our students can be in the classroom and connected and engaged in their learning. And then the last investment in this space is an Entune System Support. Again, it's around just beefing up our technology integration and supports made available to students and teachers. On the right-hand side, you see an investment around expanding our community support hubs. This was something we learned through the pandemic that we're looking to continue, and that is making sure we have supports in our communities. Our families should not have to always come to 2601 Bransford Avenue to get the support that they need. And so, this is our model to make sure we're in our communities and being responsive to the needs of our students and families. And then the last two here are around attendance intervention support and redesigning our alternative learning centers to make sure that those students have the supports that they need and they can re-engage back in their assigned learning community. There are several new funding strategies that we recommended to our Board and was approved in their aspirational budget. I'll take just a few minutes to walk through some of those items. The first thing is around our Metro Schools Reimagined. We have investments designed to support students with investments in band programs and transportation for college and experiential learning opportunities. This includes expanding our SCIF program, our blended pre-K, and additional counselors. This work also falls under something transformational we're undertaking right now in moving fifth grade back to our elementary schools. So, that's all a part of our Metro Schools Reimagined work. So, all of that you see at the top of that page, including expanding school counselors, school social workers. We know the needs of our students and our teachers right now, so we want to make sure those supports are available in each school and can meet the demand that is present. On the right-hand side, you see investments around expanding our science curriculum work to make sure we have the right supports in our support hub and thinking about in an equitable way how we're advancing our work in science and STEAM. Our leadership framework support, we know that teachers are the number one impact on our students, but you, principal leadership matters because they're the individuals who recruit and retain and support those teachers in their classrooms. So, we're looking to expand our leadership framework support. We want to increase and expand our ACT in college preparation. We are launching, relaunching our Equity Roadmap this summer, in which all MNPS employees will be engaging in professional learning around our equity, diversity, and inclusion goals. So, we're looking to add additional support to make sure that our Equity Roadmap is integrated in everything that we do across our district. We are looking to expand our trauma-informed schools and build upon our digital future work. All of those items fall under our Academic and Social-Emotional Learning Integration. Next, I'll move into Operational Improvements and School Support. We are looking to expand our instructional technology support. You heard me talk a little bit about that under the Continuity of Federally Funded Initiatives. Our technology reboot and our cybersecurity and networking monitoring tools are all about that enhancement. Again, part, the major step four was getting a device into the hands of our students. And now, we've got to make sure we have the infrastructure to really support that integration for every student in every school throughout the entire year, including Promising Scholars, because we are using that integration in our summer programming. And on the right-hand side, I hope you've heard a lot about our Personalized Student Dashboard. This is about equipping our students and our families with real-time data and supports to make sure they know where they are and what's available to them to accelerate their outcomes. We're looking to expand our parent and family engagement work, so we want to continue with our family support work and translators and programmings and having the avenues by which parents, teachers, and staff can support our students together in a collaborative way. And lastly, on this page, an expansion of our strategic initiatives and investments, making sure that the areas that we're investing in, that we're able to evaluate, that we're able to capture our return on investment as we continue with that work year over year. Continuing on in the Operational Improvements and School Support, we have a few more investments around our construction and sustainability, making sure that we have the appropriate amount of maintenance supplies and materials. And we've seen increased cost in this space, just like everyone else, so we want to make sure we can keep up with the demand. We are looking to expand our energy and conservation techs across the district. With such robust compensation packages, we want to make sure we have the human resources supports. Because as we're making sure that we're taking leaps and huge steps forward in compensating our staff, we want to make sure our human resources team is staffed to a level to address our pay scales, our adjustments, and reviewing our market analysis to keep up with the demand so that our employees can work and serve in Nashville. On the right-hand side, this has kind of been an ongoing investment area. Right now, we are under a waiver, a grant with the federal government. We don't know to date what that will look like moving forward. And so we just wanted to make sure this was in front of the board. They did approve this in front of you as well to continue our no-cost meals for all students. And then lastly, on this page, you'll see an expansion and investment around our student health clinics. In years past, we've had health clinics in some of our schools, and so we're looking to retrofit those health clinics to meet the needs of our students and our staff. And lastly, we do need investments around our student transportation. I think this year, we've all heard stories about what's happening with transportation. So we want to recruit and retain the best and brightest transportation leaders and drivers, but we also want to make sure that we have the appropriate communication tools and other safety measures in place to keep our students safe to and from school. And the last thing I do want to address before I finish my time, because I know this is top of mind for everyone. It's been a struggle the last 24 hours as we've learned about the tragedy down in Texas. And I know we all are grieving and reflecting on and sending out our thoughts and prayers to the families that were impacted, the children and the teachers who are not with us today. So it's been a tough few hours, and our students did return to school today. We've had a very, very successful day, but it's been important for us as a city to come together and respond like we always do. I'm very appreciative to Chief Drake for his collaboration and what things will look like for MNPS as we move forward. Fortunately, there was not a lot of revamping we needed to do today because we've been proactive in this space, but we are committed to continuing to review our safety measures, our protocols, to make sure that we have the best practices in place for our students and our staff. So again, we met today, had a long evening yesterday planning. We did send communications out to our families and to our staff to make sure we were all settled and ready to support our students today when they did return. But having said that, I do just want to acknowledge that this is not a school issue. This is a society issue, and there's lots of conversations and advocacy that needs to happen for us to address this. So this is not a time-after-time discussion and reaction to how we educate and keep our students safe. Our students deserve to learn in safe environments. Mass murders have targeted schools, churches, grocery stores, concerts, any number of other venues in order to inflict harm. They have more often than not done so with weapons designed for military use, but readily available, but legally and illegally to anyone who wants or desires regardless of their background. So I'm not here to prescribe a solution. I'm here to continue to rally us around what's necessary to address this as a society issue, but more importantly, to keep our children and our educators and our staff safe. So I will pause there, council member, and turn it back over to you because I'm sure there are lots of questions.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the speed with which that was delivered so we can make the most of our time for questions. And we know if you have to duck out to a graduation, we will excuse you for that. I have a number of council members in the queue. Hold on, I'm going to write some names down. Parker, I will begin with Councilmember Hurt.
Thank you so much, Dr. Battle and Mr. Henson, for being here. And I know that I probably sound like a broken record because I bring this up every year because I just don't understand how we can have so much money and we don't really see the results in our school systems. And I mean, it's been a long time since I was in school, but it's just baffling me about how we had less money back then, but much, much greater results. But so I'm just saying it as a blanket. But I want to say that I was on an interview at Inside Politics, and I was asked a question. We're talking about that our teachers are the highest-paid teachers in the state, and we keep giving them raises, yet our literacy rate is still low. What is the issue here? Now, my response was is that I think we have to fund the entire ecosystem. You can't just fund the teachers. You have to fund the paraprofessionals. You have to fund everything and everybody in order for that to work. So my question is basically around funding the paraprofessionals. I know we talked about that a little bit in what Mr. Henson provided. And my thing is that if Metro doesn't fund that, although I know the mayor has made an announcement about funding, does the schools have the ability to fund those positions with the funds that they receive from Metro? That's the first question. The second question is the states decrease because they said they had an increase in state-school-run schools, but then it was stated that we had a decrease in our schools in our enrollment, and that continues to decline. So is that why they decreased their funds to us because of the decrease in our enrollment? I also want to know what has been the achievement, accomplishment since the last budget? Or has it increased or has it decreased in terms of the academic performance? And also, I guess, in terms of the $21 million that had been allocated for support staff, did we, how was that determined? And did we think it was enough? And will that make sure that all of those support staff members will be at a living wage? I think that covers my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I will answer about half of those, and then Chris will take the other half. The first thing that I will address, I think, for many, many years, we've been having this conversation about particularly state funding when it comes to what was previously the basic education program and how woefully underfunded Metro National Public Schools was in that formula. You've probably heard about the suit that was filed because of that underfunding for our students. And so in fact, as we're talking about new investments, we're playing catch-up to the many, many years of underfunding for our system. But of course, we have been very thankful and continue to be thankful for our city's commitment to closing that gap and making sure that we're able to maintain our continuity of operations from year to year. And I'm going to reflect for just a moment on last year's investment. So we are still in the school cycle with regards to having the best-paid teachers in the state. And there have been some positive outcomes by that, by that investment. One, we're seeing one of our lowest years in vacancies for our certificated staff. And that means more qualified, certificated staff in front of students on a daily basis. Another positive outcome to that investment has been, back in January, we proudly shared our map data, our winter map data, from our students where we saw our students actually bounce back to and exceed, actually, their pre-pandemic performance scores. So we're seeing our students exceed the national average with regards to growth in both literacy and numeracy. So we are seeing those positive outcomes based upon those investments. And in one area, making sure that we have qualified, certified teachers in front of our students every day. Part of that was also our ability to invest in a new curriculum that is equitable and that is being implemented across the entire district, particularly in our elementary schools. So we have adopted a K-5 curriculum, and we've also adopted a 612 curriculum as well. The other thing that I wanted to address with regards to, and Chris, you can talk about this a little bit more, when it comes to the ASD seats and our ASD numbers and our enrollment, that is a difference in actual enrollment and seats that are available. It is possible for that to shift as students actually enroll in school next school year. And then with regards to the support staff, you might recall that the mayor did commission a study in partnership with NPEF to do a market analysis to address where we were with vacancies, how long it's taken us to hire these leaders in the district, and pay. And so that study is what informed that targeted compensation package to make sure that we could address our hard-to-staff support positions. And then, Chris, if you can address the other questions with regards to funding, that would be great, in addition to those investments for COLAS and STEPS and what this looked like over the last few years.
Sure. And as Dr. Battle indicated, for several years, we were in budget reduction mode back when the pandemic hit and the year after, and even preceding that. And so we're finally up to a point now where we feel like that we can make some substantial gains. We do have on that summary sheet a listing of all of the changes that are being proposed from the current year budget to next fiscal year's budget, which does include the transportation pay upgrade, the paraprofessional pay upgrade, nutrition services pay upgrade. So those targeted investments in those pay upgrades for those particular employee groups. And as you indicated, and as I've indicated earlier, as part of the state funding shortfall, part of that, one factor in that is that there is increased enrollment in those state-run charter schools that are not a part of our school district. They're a part of the state's school district. And so we have a new one opening up next year. We have several that continue to add a grade each year. And so that's probably something that's going to continue moving forward, hopefully not to this extent, because that's just one piece of our state funding decrease. But there are other pieces like the fiscal capacity calculation, which again, that will also continue, I assume, into the future. But hopefully, if I haven't answered your question, council lady, let me know, please.
So I guess I'm just saying is that the reduction in what the state is giving is as a result of the declining enrollment that we have. And I also want to know the connection with the literacy rate because if the literacy rate is staying at the same level and it's not increasing, then I'm trying to figure out the money. You know, we keep asking for more money, and we don't see the real results of the money. So is the issue money?
So as I previously mentioned, there's lots of factors that go into our ability to support every individual child so that we can get the outcomes we want to see. Teacher compensation is one of them. We have to make sure we have a highly qualified teacher in front of every student, and nothing's going to replace that. However, we've got to make sure that the appropriate curriculum and resources are in place. We've got to make sure that we have the appropriate professional development for our teachers as well to keep them growing and learning. We also have to make sure that our facilities have the conditions for students, for teachers to thrive and for students to also thrive in as well. So it's a combination of investments that are needed. So when you look at our aspirational budget, you can see various buckets that we need to invest in. All of them point to student achievement. So when we're talking about academic and SEO integration, those investments matter. Those are all the touchpoints that we know we want our students to have so that they can be in school, engaged, and learning as well. But I'll take us back to the data point that I just mentioned with regards to our map data. This is the first time we've seen growth scores like we're seeing with our students right now. We're in the year where we're talking about having the best-paid teachers in the state. That's this year. So this is the first year that we've not had to go back and cut and reduce programming. And we're seeing that benefit translate into student outcomes already. We've just now taken the TIN Ready or TCAP, most people are familiar with. We've not received those outcomes yet. We have some early indications that, with some other assessments with Wheaton Fastbridge, that students are making growth and progress, but this is a journey. When we're talking about being, you know, underfunded and not having the resources or the qualified teachers in front of students, it is going to take several years to get us where we need to be. But we're committed to have daily the high-level implementation we need for our students to get there and to give our teachers what they need and our support staff what they need to fully support our students. And so I think that's going to be a journey. It's going to be an ongoing conversation. But I'm really excited about the positive indicators that we're seeing so far and being able to move particularly literacy and numeracy outcomes forward.
Thank you. Trust me, we all want those same things, and we're trying to find the best way to get those solutions. So I appreciate your response.
Thank you. Councilmember Benedict.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Dr. Battle, and thank you, Mr. Henson. So I'm on page 22 of 25. Been scouring here. I'm looking at line, I'm sorry, account number 5325, and this is about safety and security. It looks like we have 44 school security staff, and the budget for that is $2.5 million. Is that correct for the entire school security team?
Actually, council lady, there's 45 total positions in a budget of $4 million total. If you only look at the salary line item, you're correct. It's 44 there on the support line at $2.5 million. Approximately 34, 35 of those are school security officers, and then you have others that are listed here as well.
Thank you. I ask because of the incident that I spoke about earlier. I'm not going to reiterate it, but the incident that took place at Inglwood Elementary with the intruder. And then we had three women teachers who held him back. I believe that there would have been some presence, you know, whether that's an SRO. I don't like that idea because currently, SROs carry guns, and I don't think we need to have a gun in a building where there's five to 10-year-olds. But school security or something, I'd like to beef that up so that, you know, we have as much security as is appropriate for our youngest scholars. And I think the principals would have a lot to say about that. But my point is, I'd like to understand what that would cost. I don't know if you can get that in time for a wish list request tomorrow, but I would like you to begin to think about that. And if you can give me any type of an aspirational number for that, I've got a wish list. So I think that this does need to be looked at, and MNPD is willing to look at it as well, as they said in the prior hearing. So if you could just help give me a commitment that you'll take a look. I don't know what you might be able to provide. Again, I don't want to set an unrealistic expectation of asking you to give me a lot of information by tomorrow. I know that's not possible. If you can ballpark something, that would be very helpful for me to take a look and see if there's not a way that we could do that.
Yes, we'll definitely take a look at that. And there are some other roles and responsibilities in the district as well, campus supervisors, campus support, other individuals who we do have in some of our schools that we can include in that calculation. So we will take a look and share that information back.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Director Battle, for being here today. And I apologize for not catching exactly what was on the screen, but the $7.5 million figure to continue with no-cost meals, is that in this budget or no? Is funding to continue that?
This is a part of our aspirational budget request that Dr. Battle submitted to the Board of Education. And so these items that are in the aspirational request would be outside of what has been included in the mayor's recommended funding amount. So that, here it is, that $7.5 million for no-cost meals for all is not currently in our budget as far as what the board approved yesterday. And just a little more information on this, this is the Community Eligibility Provision Program, which allows entire school districts to offer no-cost meals to all students regardless of income. That federal waiver is, as Dr. Battle indicated, through the USDA. That federal waiver, it looks like it's going to end. We're hopeful that there might be some consideration to extending it, but there's not been a final decision made yet. And so this $7.5 million would allow us to be able to continue that. Without this, then we would go back to the previous system where certain schools would qualify as no-cost meals for all. And I think the latest that I saw was approximately 33 schools would go back to the free and reduced, and then the paid meals.
And if we had enough time, just being a previous principal in the district, the impact of no-cost meals on our students, both socially, academically, just meeting their basic needs, I could go on and on about. So if we ever need to unpack that, we can. But it's definitely a need to make sure that our students are prepared to engage once they enter the classroom.
Thank you. And so absent federal support in that space, and if we're not able to put that money into this budget, how many students and families, excuse me, how many students and families can we expect to? I'm going to excuse myself.
You going to be okay? Someone follow him out and make sure he's okay. So the question was, how many students will not be able to, hang with you, Emily, will not be able to have access to meals potentially if that federal money is not there? And is that federal money there this year, we think, or is it definitely gone?
There hasn't been a final decision made, I don't believe, regarding the USDA waiver. I don't have the exact number of students and families. I think the number of schools that would be affected would be 33 schools that would go back to the previous method of students' pay or you qualify for free and reduced meals. And so I don't know the numbers that would be affected from those 33 schools, but we can get you that.
You can get us that. Okay, we'll add that to the list, number of students on free and reduced. Thank you so much. If someone can check on Councilmember Parker in a minute, that'd be great. Next is Councilmember Withers.
Thank you so much, Chair Allen, for recognizing me, even though I'm not on the committee. And thank you to Dr. Battle and to Mr. Henson for being here. I have two questions, but I'll start with one that is related to the compensation for support staff. I definitely, I worked in the transportation sector for many years and know how difficult it is to hire, just to hire and certainly to retain anyone with a commercial driver's license and especially with a passenger endorsement. So I think that that is money well spent and hope that that works out well to attract and retain school bus drivers who handle our children out on the very dangerous streets that we have in Nashville every day. So that role can't be overstated in its importance. I did want to follow up, though, a little bit more. It's been brought to my attention that I wanted just to get some clarification on for the compensation levels for sort of the secretarial and bookkeeping staff. One of the reasons I asked for that is, you know, I've worked as an administrative professional for many years and supervise staff, and I know how difficult it can be also to retain and attract very good admin staff who a lot of times are the first person that someone coming to a school sees or interacts with, whether it's a parent or community member. And I believe in the instance that Councilmember Benedict referenced, I think, one of the staff who would probably be classified in that manner also assisted in controlling the person who attacked the school in order to keep them, keep students safe. So definitely, they play an important role. I wanted to get clarification on what is the compensation level that is being offered for the sort of secretarial admin bookkeeping staff?
Yes, if it's, okay, Councilmember, if I could have Melissa Reberge, our Chief of HR, approach the podium back there. And as she's coming, I just want to reinforce, every MNPS employee matters to our ability to educate all of our students. And so thank you for acknowledging that, and that's something that we're trying to recognize in our compensation strategy in this budget. Ms. Reberge.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. And as she said, all of our employees matter. Secretaries and bookkeepers will be getting that 4% COLA and their STEPS, depending on where they are in the scale. We actually move our employees up two steps for the first nine steps to get them to that midpoint faster, so they would get both of those compensation items.
And what would, just again, for my edification, but like, what would be an example of sort of a base, what would be the least amount that someone in that role would be compensated at?
I don't have that number, but we can get that for you.
Okay, thank you for that. Because like I said, I know those folks who sit at that desk wear many hats, and that is an important role too, and you definitely want folks there who don't just have the clerical skills, but also the people skills to can really keep the school functioning effectively so the principals and teachers can focus on their important work. So that's number one. But number two, just in my role as the Metro Council Representative on the Planning Commission, wanted to raise something that I've seen some talk about and wanted to kind of run past Dr. Battle and Mr. Henson. But my understanding is that when we have zone change requests or planning department requests in the county to look at sort of growth projections for the county, that MNPS provides information to Metro Planning about projected school enrollments from those decisions. I've heard some discussion that that is based upon birth rates and not necessarily, you know, whether folks are moving into the district that have children or things like that. And I wanted to know, number one, is that true? And if so, are we seeing any, just overall, any trends about whether it be birth rates or just overall birth rates of families with children in the area that would have implications for how we should be planning growth in the county? I myself am a Gen Xer, and just generational, we went through a period of time when family sizes were a little bit smaller in the 60s and 70s than they had been for a while, and then we're back having larger family sizes again, which I think is great. But for a county that's trying to grow in a smart way and be sure that we provide adequate school facilities and teachers and staff, what are some of those trends looking like that we should think about?
Sure, and good questions. I will mention that I know depending upon the type of housing that's being proposed, there's a difference in the calculation of how many students could potentially be generated from that type of housing. So it's a matter of the cost, it's a matter of the number of bedrooms and things of that nature that our enrollment planning and boundary planning department take into consideration when they provide those student generation, student generation numbers to Metro Planning. And so I think a lot of it is based on the type of zoning and the type of housing. We can get you the information that our enrollment and boundary planning department uses in making those projections as it relates to birth rates. There's a number of factors and variables that they use in calculating how many students can we expect from a particular development? And then also just our overall enrollment projections, just in general, how they're calculated, but we can provide that information to you. I don't have it off the top of my head, but they look at a lot of different variables in making those estimates.
And we are getting about half an hour behind schedule, so if you can keep your questions to budget questions.
That is it for me.
That would be great, thank you. And if you're not on the committee, you can keep it to a small number of questions, we would appreciate that. Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, I'll try to be brief. So I am about two and a half years on the council, and I'm noticing a lot of conversation from constituents and conversation among council members. And I think, to be quite honest, there's a little bit of frustration in that there's so much money that is being allocated. And I'm not, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, I'm not, that's not my, that's not my purpose of saying this, but we have a large percentage that's allocated to MNPS, and that doesn't include debt service for schools, it doesn't include payroll services that Metro does for schools, it doesn't include some services that some departments perform without an MOU and fiscal compensation for those services. So it's a lot of money. We've had 175, if this budget, if the mayor's budget is approved, it's 175 roughly, $1 million more in two years of new money. And yet, out of all the departments, we, there's really no sort of oversight. So we, there's very little control, not that we micromanage other departments, but we definitely have a little bit of oversight where we don't have that with schools. And I know I'm hearing from constituents their concern about student outcomes, and I'm really glad to hear that that's on the rise. But I'm just wondering if, because we get budget, proposed budgets, and we get actuals, like our FY22, February 21, I'm sorry, budgeted versus actuals from every other department, is that something that you guys do or could do to show where you had a proposed budget and then where the money actually, in reality, went? So that we have a good idea of what the true needs are? Because sometimes things change, I get it, during the years, so we can sort of see how that's working because it is so much money just to have a little bit better idea of that. So that's my first. That's my first question, sorry. Yes, and then the, sorry, I'm only going to ask for two. The other, oh, no, I'm going to ask three. Outside of, so the $20 million that we have a shortfall from the state that was brought to us, outside of council doing something, there were two other things. What have you guys been able to use from your own toolbox to close that gap? Like what could be done, assuming that council does not increase that allocation? Is the number two question? And the third question is more along the lines of what's recently happened, understanding that, in my opinion, the most dangerous weapon is the person that's pulling the trigger? And how are we getting there? And we talked about, or it was, it came out that the young man was bullied, and I think that's an overwhelming, it's just a recurring theme. And so I just want to know if there are any initiatives within MNPS to address bullying, not only the people that are being bullied, but the people that are doing the bullying, so that it's, I hate that we have to lock down our schools like they're Fort Knox or, you know, some sort of prison. I mean, I want to do that because I want to protect our kids, but I also want to do what we can do to solve the cancer, which is the mental health of the people that are actually doing that. So just wondering if there's any programming or policies or anything around bullying?
All right, I'll take part of the first question. Chris will pick up, and then feel free to kick it back to me. But the first thing I want to highlight with regards to the investments, part of the reason that we are now presenting an aspirational budget process is for transparency around what we're investing in, what those investments look like, and what we anticipate as the outcome drivers of that investment. And so what you'll see here, and if you were able to dig into the supporting documents, is full transparency around why these investments are needed and what we're tracking, what we're progress monitoring to make sure we're getting the outcomes for our students. And so also, as you look at this, is a lack of investment also means that we're going to have stagnant data points in some of these areas. We've identified what we call focused outcomes that we share publicly, we share with all of our schools based upon the tier and grade of our students. So there's clarity around where we're striving for every student to be based upon where they are. And so that's what you see in the aspirational budget. I think if you went back and looked at budget presentations in years past, we've not been this transparent to say this is exactly the investment we need, this is how much it costs, and this is the return in investment that we expect and that you can hold us accountable to with those investments. With regards to budget to actuals, Chris, you want to jump in there?
Sure, I'd be glad to. We, you probably know, we are on the same financial system as the rest of Metro Government, and so our data is available just like any other Metro department would be available. We do, through our Board of Education, we do submit budget amendments during the year regarding expenditures, if there's a change from what was projected to what we're actually seeing in reality. We do have a process where we would submit a budget amendment to the Board of Education. One other piece is we do submit what's called an Amendment C document monthly when the month is closed out for, I thought it was intended for council members, but we also send it to Metro Finance to show where we stand after each month, after each month is closed out. And so hopefully, that answers maybe the question that you, the first question that you had.
You want to go ahead and answer the question about what we've been trying to close the gap and it's going to be with the textbook?
The question that you had regarding the gap, closing the gap, we did intentionally include, as was mentioned earlier, $5.5 million in the textbook line in case that needed to be something that would be considered nonrecurring or one-time. The remaining, as you can see from document number one, the remaining additional funding is outlined here. The vast majority of it is going to those, either the cost of living adjustment, the step increase, insurance increase, or those focused investments regarding the pay upgrade for transportation, paraprofessionals, and nutrition services. And so anything else that we would be looking at to make reductions, we would be making cuts to something that we have currently. We have not gone that route at this point. We have had some internal conversations, initial conversations regarding potential uses of some federal grants, et cetera, that I mentioned earlier, if that's something that would even be feasible, because typically, those would require Tennessee Department of Education approval through an application process to change that. But what we did was intentionally include that $5.5 million, since that was remaining over and above the continuity of operations budget as well as the pay upgrades as an option.
And with regards to your last question, we do have, as a part of our Student Parent Handbook, we have a pretty robust bullying policy and procedure that's in place that is adopted by every school in the event that there is an issue or concern. But you'll also see in our aspirational budget, that's reflected as well in our ESAR funding, having investment in the social-emotional learning and mental health piece. So things, and we've taken kind of a two-pronged approach with regards to the proactive measures, and then those supports that need to be in place if there was an incident that we need to respond to. So when you see things like the advocacy centers, the restorative practice assistance, expansion of social workers and counselors in schools, all of that is to make sure that we have the supports in place in every school without delay for us to support our students and to make sure that we are moving towards that bully-free environment that we all desire for our MNPS schools.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash, budget questions? No, you didn't have your hand up. Awesome, check you off, that's great, okay. That's okay. Councilmember Bradford, budget questions?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to follow up on one question. Councilmember Hurt was kind of asking, who made the decision that $21 million was enough for support staff? And I don't think I quite caught the answer to that. And as, and the second part of that is, during those discussions, were the employee unions involved? If they were not, why were they left out? Secondly, I noticed in your presentation that part of your strategy for addressing the $22 million shortfall would be taking money from the fund balance. While, as part of reason why there's a fund balance for emergencies, there's been problems in the past with continually taking money out of savings to balance the budgets, and then you end up with a situation where you don't have money. So if that was the strategy being taken, is there a plan to replenish those funds and to make sure that the next year, the budget is balanced and we don't have to take from that fund? Then this last question, you don't have to answer tonight, you can get it to Ms. Darby and get to us. But I'd also like to know, what percentage of MNPS properties are green? Are they, how many of them have solar power? How many of them are being run on renewable energies?
Great, thank you for your questions. Melissa, I'm sorry to be picking on you right now, but as a lead of our HR department and working closely with NPEF and our unions on the pay analysis, could you respond to the first question for me, please?
Sure. So I think when it comes to employee compensation, more is always better, but there are times we want to make sure that our requests are reasonable. So with the mayor's office, we worked with NPEF and then a national consultant, educational consultant that does human capital work throughout the country, USHCA, and they provided a set of recommendations that we have sent, that the board has since adopted and proposed that focused on those high-needs areas where the majority of our employees are. And we do have regular meetings with SCIU, and we did discuss the pay study and listen to their suggestions, and then also listen to the input that our consultants gave before proposing the targeted investments in bus drivers, paraprofessionals, and our nutrition services. Those are among our hardest positions to fill and also do have a number of turnover. So we're hopeful that with this increase in compensation, that we will both find more employees and keep the employees that we have.
All right, Chris. Thank you.
Regarding the question about fund balance, of course, a fund balance accumulates over time with, when revenue projections are less than the actual collections, and likewise, when expenditures are less than the actual budgeted amount. And so we're hopeful, again, through looking at some trends that we've seen relating to both revenue and expenditures, that that would be something that could and would be made up, understanding the concern that you raise. The question regarding the facilities, we do make it a standard that any new facility would be at a minimum LEED Silver. We did have the first LEED Gold building in the state of Tennessee, school building in the state of Tennessee, I think it was the Tusculum Elementary Building. Since then, we've had a few more, including the latest at the New Hillsborough High School, which is LEED Gold certified. And so that is something that we look to do for any of our, particularly our major construction projects. That's something that's just a part of the Uh, that's that's something that's just a part of the uh the the design of the facility.
Thank you. Councilmember Cash?
Thanks. I kind of want to follow up a little bit on the um the support staff uh question that Councilmember Bradford asked. Um, so I'm I'm pleased that that some support staff is getting uh is getting a good jump in in pay. Uh, I know teachers got special attention or or act above above the typical um pay increases last year, and the promise was to to take care of uh support staff needs this year in a broader way. Um, I guess my question is, uh, and I appreciate um uh getting some getting something from getting information directly from uh MNPS Human Resources. But I guess I guess my question is, why is the mayor's why did the mayor's office take such a big lead in this process and not MNPS themselves? Um, you know, hiring hiring somebody to help with the nitty-gritty of it, but um because MNPS has better access to those employees and and regular discussions with those employees, um, I think they're in better shape to know what the needs are. So I I just don't know why the mayor's office was given the lead on pay plans that the ultimately the MNPS School Board are the ones legally that have to adopt them. Um, and so I guess my question is, uh, can MNPS take the lead on the part of the plan that that came out said that there are future steps, you know, few here the next steps. Um, and so in those next steps, can MNPS take the lead on on improving uh employee pay at all levels? And um will they better engage uh employees and their representatives on um on what on on needs? We don't have uh required or mandated collective bargaining in Tennessee anymore, but we that is that is we still have the ability to to negotiate with employees. Um, so I I hope that that can be even richer. Um, and I also have a question, so I'll leave that out there, but also, so B E P funds the um district based on B E P's funds based on students, a number of students, and the student-based budgets at the schools are are funded based on the number of students. Uh, and I've been involved in a couple of those, developing those student-based budgets in at school level. So I guess my question is, if we're losing 3,700 students, there should be there should be savings in that, too, right? Uh, I mean, there should be, there should be decreases in in some staff, I would think, because 3,700 students don't need teachers or and and I guess part of that is, I think I got heard you say it is possible, and we get to July and August, and those projections could be different, right?
Um, I'll take um the first part of the question, Chris. You'll take the second. Melissa, you might want to approach the podium if you want to add um something um to the response uh with regards to the pay study. And I'll uh be very blunt here. We've been doing pay studies year after year um for our um employee compensation. Um, it historically has not led to greater resources um to make sure that we could offer those competitive um pay rates um for our employees, both certificated and support. And so through um a collaboration partnership mindset, so we all are understanding the same needs, the same data, uh, we wanted to make sure that that opportunity did exist, and um so the mayor did commission um his pay study as well. But we've been doing pay studies for years, and a lot of the information we knew um already. Uh, with regards to the process, and Melissa, please feel free to add uh more here. Um, the information that was collected and and used from MNPS perspective was shared by MNPS. So we were providing the data and the information necessary um to really drive um the um analysis from our end. That also included um conversations and meetings um with our representatives. Um, in fact, one specific example of that um is around the new pay scale for our bus drivers. That was um something our um drivers told us in meetings, that they would like for us to look at that comparative um pay scale till we go. Um, and that was adopted. So that was something that um we heard, we listened to, um, was um confirmed in our work around the market analysis and is reflected in this compensation um uh package. Uh, Melissa, you might want to add something else in leading those meetings, but there there have been ongoing engagement um as a part of this market analysis and outside of the market analysis as well.
So this was really a collaboration and a partnership with the mayor's office, N P E F, and then the consultant. We did provide all of the data, as you said. We know our employees best, so we provided what our salary rates were, how our pay system worked, and then worked with them on these recommendations. One of the recommendations initially made by S C I U was to add a flat dollar amount for certain employees, and we took that recommendation back to the consultants, and we did add flat dollar amounts and then the 4% for our nutrition services workers that has resulted in a new pay scale for them. And then we also did that for some of our employees in our transportation department. Um, we, after we get those recommendations, it's my office's job to operationalize that and trying not to make it more confusing than it needs to be. So we do take a wide range of input, and we were very involved in the process.
Thank you. And and regarding your question on the student-based budgeting process, we we look at the weighted student funding formula each year. Uh, we typically begin in the fall. We have a uh an S B B design team, as we call it, Student-Based Budgeting Design Team, which is made up of principals and teachers and uh different central office department heads, et cetera, to determine what do schools actually uh feel like they need to be able to operate in the way that they want to operate. And and therefore, over half of our budget goes directly out to school principals for student-based budgeting. And if you add in the transfer for our charter schools, that's that's probably two-thirds of our budget, if not more, that goes directly out to schools. And so uh in the fall and throughout the winter, when we were having these discussions with principals and teachers regarding what's needed, uh, we have, over time, made some improvements to that weighted student funding formula to provide more funding uh to schools where we, for instance, increased the weight for our English learner uh students. We've increased the weight for our students that live in poverty, uh, increased the base amount uh that would go out for every student to each school. And so we have made some improvements, have been able to make some improvements, so that that funding uh that the schools are receiving and and that are allocated to them, that they feel like it's it's what they need to be able to operate a school efficiently and effectively.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Mendez?
Thanks. I'm going to ask one question with just a little bit of context first. Um, so the the context is um around uh fund balance and the um really very large amounts of money um new to MNPS over the last couple of years. It's important that we not lose track of the context that going back as far as the '08 downturn, um, MNPS employees straight across the board um got squeezed on pay for a number of years to help the city get through um that '08 downturn, and and it never got fixed after that. And as the economy started to improve, we rolled into the years where the metropolitan government was um absolutely squeezing constituencies on services and employees on pay for the years last term, when we were refusing to do an increase in the tax rate that was clearly needed, and we had a chance to do before um COVID hit. And the reality is that um, you know, the fact that there's a hundred million dollars more to pay over the last couple of years is absolutely needed to get in the ballpark of reasonable compensation for employees after nearly a decade of squeezing that. Um, at the worst, a few years ago, um, the fund balance for the oper schools op fund operating operating fund was around $36 million in the budget. Um, 202 million in this budget is inadequate. Um, it is immensely better than literally making Chris operate with about 13 days' worth of expenses in the fund balance like it was. Um, and now it's up, you know, 202 million is more like two months' worth. Best practice would definitely be more than that. Um, but um I personally feel like um the state has sprung a surprise, and I think fund balance, like I have been the chief whiner about fund balance in this room over the last four years, and I am saying I think we should use fund balance for that um with the understanding that it's a one-time thing, next year's budget has to have it squared away, and uh we move forward. Here's the question. Um, on figuring out what we're going to do about the $22 million shortfall, I'm seeking clarification. What I'm hearing y'all saying is that y'all have given us as many ideas and information as we're going to get. Um, and this is the package, and we should go forth and figure out whether we're gonna um take the five million worth of textbooks out, even though we know that's been squeezed for a number of years, or whether we're going to use fund balance, or we're just gonna give you a lower number and make you figure it out. Uh, but what the clarification is, we've got as much information from MNPS as what we're going to get. Is that right?
At this point in time, Councilman, yes. Uh, the School Board has not entertained at this point uh making looking at budget reductions from what we currently have in the current fiscal year. What we've looked at is uh the additional funding and where it's planning to to go to. Again, the vast majority going to uh to employee compensation. Uh, and so those options that we that we laid out on the front end, uh, those still remain as the the best options that we have at this point. Obviously, we're going to, you know, we're going to to make work whatever needs to 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 make work based upon the total allo funding allocation that the Metro Council ultimately provides. But um, you know, we don't we don't have a lot of money somewhere else that we that we're just waiting to to say, here, we can, we can handle that. It would be taking from uh something that we're currently doing.
And and just the quick corollary to that. So I take that to mean that the response to the letter that was in the media yesterday, like today's presentation is a response to that letter, right?
So yesterday, our board approved um the budget documents that you see um today.
All right, thank you.
And can you just clarify about the maintenance of of effort, just in terms of what you even have the flexibility to reduce? Just for the viewing audience, so they can understand what that what what state law requires of of you.
Sure. Maintenance of effort, the requirement is that uh moving from one year to the next, the funding body cannot reduce the total amount of budgeted local revenue. And so maintenance of effort obviously is not a concern this year, uh, since the proposal is to to significantly increase that local revenue.
So we can't go backwards? Okay, fair enough. Uh, let's see, I have uh Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, Chair, for recognizing me, even though I'm not on um budget and finance. I kind of piggybacking on what Councilman Mendez said related to the letter. I I would not support a budget that does not use fund balance for this year, because I feel like it's vitally important that we we have floated the payments to employees, and we need to make sure that that is honored, and that's the only way I know how to do it, because we are relying on you to then do what you all have discussed publicly and with the mayor's office um from a funding perspective. So um I don't think that's the right way to go, is to to try to reduce um money out of people's pockets who are really, we we should be thanking God that they're willing to work for MNPS at some of these wages that they're paid. It's it's insane. They cannot live on this money. So that's kind of my soapbox for the for the minute, but I'm kind of thinking about future, because I'm trying to think ahead. You know, the issues that we've dealt with this term, next term, the term after that that people may be involved in, is I am very discouraged about this budget, because I look at the state reducing, you know, the funding at the state level as a huge red flag, and it's going to get worse once TESA is implemented, once vouchers are implemented, um, and what that impact is going to look like. And so how is that impacting your planning from a future five-year perspective or a 10-year perspective, you know, when we're getting these kinds of adjustments at the last minute uh the way this was handled this time?
Um, so from just kind of a proactive planning process, we we do have a system by which we follow B E P estimates. I think um as Chris mentioned, um, there we were a little caught off guard by by the final given what we received um the month before. You are absolutely right. There are implications around TESA that we just don't know um yet, but we will closely follow those estimates as they're coming in, watching projections and enrollment. We did have a little bit um of kind of a weird few years with the whole harmless around enrollment and the impact that that would have um moving into um this next year's um budget. But we're also being mindful about um what's recurring and non-recurring expenses. And so that's why you see um that what we were able to offset with the um continuity of operations, what came in a little under projections, that's why you see that amount in textbooks, because we want to be very, we want to be good partners, uh, one, and we want to be collaborative, and we want to um be transparent around what's considered um recurring, what's considered nonrecurring, so that we can plan accordingly and strategically make sure um that in future years, if depending on the approach we take, we can um close the gap and sustain um the level of operations that we currently um are serving under.
And I'll just add that uh as Dr. Battle indicated earlier, I mean, that's one of the main reasons that we entered into litigation with the state was inadequacy of the state's funding formula, particularly for Davidson County. And as I mentioned earlier, that's something that it looks like, uh, you know, we received that estimate conveniently right after TESA was passed. Um, and the projection that we had received the month prior was much higher than what we had ended up getting uh for our April estimate. We'll get another estimate in May and another one uh in June, so those estimates will continue to come in. Uh, but I think it's worth noting, at this point anyway, I I believe that the total state B E P funding of our total revenue is down to about 27%. So it's it's continuing to decrease as a percentage of our total revenue. Um, but as was indicated on a previous slide that we looked at, you know, it's been fairly stable over the last four or five years as far as what the B E P uh number has been included in the budget ordinance, which has been close to the actual. As was indicated, this year was a a big change. Uh, but as Davidson County's fiscal capacity continues to increase, uh, we we assume that the state funding is going to continue to decrease as a percentage of the total with that equalization factor that's included in that formula.
Thank you. Um, and to and to be clear, what what our letter to the School Board yesterday was, here's the timeline we need to work with. If you can help us, we need to know where you can help us. And they have provided exactly that, which I'm very grateful for. So thanks for that clarification. Uh, we have two more, and then we can move on. Councilmember Druffel, you were after Councilmember Lee, actually. And hang on. All right, Councilmember Druffel, you're recognized, and Councilmember Lee. But I haven't turned your microphone on.
Question, I think, for possibly uh a month or two down the road. So I think to create confidence, I know there's been some concerns about the direction with the investment. Is there a place and time where we'll get metrics that can help us uh reconcile the investment uh in literacy and 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 social justice, et cetera, that can come back and identify those programs relative to our successes? Because, as you suggested, sometimes it takes time, but the reality is, I think, we get a greater confidence if we see, hey, there is some movement and there's some direction. Uh, is there a time and place we could possibly get that kind of feedback on metrics?
Absolutely. Our focus outcomes are aligned to those metrics and outcomes we uh want to see. So we do have um some data, uh, but I do want to just call our attention to uh when it comes to our statewide assessments, it it has been several years since we've had a consistent measure um of assessment that we can use comparative data year over year. Um, this will be the first um school year where we'll have, we're predicting we'll have um some of the statewide standardized testing um data um for us to springboard um from. Uh, but I also want to acknowledge that this year was also a very challenging year as we continue to navigate um the pandemic. We we do continue to leverage our own assessment tools. You've heard me talk about the MAP assessment up as well. We've seen some positive indicators with regards to our S E L um data that also includes um discipline um data as well. Um, and at the end of this school, you will have um some data around our last uh focus outcome, which is around transition. So we're really clear around the literacy, numeracy data, our S E L data, and our transition data, um, to make sure that all of our students are are on a path to success, and we will continue to share that information out uh for full transparency around where we are, um, how our students are performing, and what our next steps around their work will look like.
The data and some of the metrics we could use would be available?
Yes, so interestingly enough, um, we administer our assessments in the spring um of the year. Uh, we will likely, we've received some raw scores, but not much you can do with that outside of if if it's available to use for um grades. We should likely start receiving some data, achievement data um in July. Uh, we probably won't receive growth data until um after the start of the school year. And I said, interestingly enough, um, because of the timeframe from the assessment to when you receive the data, um, it makes it very challenging um to be responsive um to that data um in the in the next school year. That's why we have so many internal assessments to help guide um our our planning and our execution of those plans.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee, bring bring us home, Chair.
Thank you so very much. Um, most of my questions were answered. I would like to say first that um all employees deserve to be the top. I want us to be careful as we are talking that we don't sound like we are pitting one group of employees against the other. We are the capital of the it city. I don't care what position I don't care what position you are in, you should be paid at the highest, and our largest budget should be for education, because that's who we're educating. So I do agree as well, that if we need to, we need to look into that fund balance. I'm so disappointed in the state, because they have the money. They did very well with the money that they had coming in. They are really over what they're supposed to have in their rainy day funds, so I, I am disappointed in that. So all of that being said, the only one question that I had that is very specific, that I was just wondering, how do you all pay your nurses? Are your nurses paid a support staff or certified staff?
They're...
Our nurses are contracted with the Metro Public Health Department, so it's whatever pay scale that the health department uses for nurses.
So they don't really come through you?
They are employees of the health department, and we have a contract with the health department to, to provide nursing services to our students.
I understand. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate, these are all important questions, and this was a really important discussion to have. Dr. Battle, I hope you didn't miss that graduation, but thank you for being here to answer all our questions. And if we think of anything else, we will, we will send it to you, and send direct, answers to Director Darby. We are going to move quickly into planning and then social services, and we appreciate y'all sticking around with this, if y'all will come on up.